Briefly, yes, to do that.
Good evening. We have two meetings to conduct this evening. The first is our school choice open public hearing, so I will call that meeting to order. And if you would, please join me in a tradition of pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the school choice open public hearing is an annual requirement. It's required that the school committee take a vote, and the vote is either to accept school choice, in which case residents could, people could choose to attend the Milton Public Schools who don't live in Milton. We are currently a no-school-choice district, given previous votes of the committee. So, the first question I would ask is, does anyone wish to speak from the audience? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll entertain a motion, either to continue our no-school-choice status, or the alternative.
A move that we continue in the no-school-choice pattern that we have been in for the entire time that we've had that option.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Ms. Padera. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? It's unanimous, four to nothing. I will now close our school choice open public hearing and open our regular school committee meeting. First approval of tonight's agenda, I do have two changes. We have stricken both executive session items, so there will be no executive session this evening. We'll report on both of those items hopefully, not hopefully, next week, and hopefully we will add AFSME, which has a ratification vote on Monday, so we'll have more to talk about on the 21st. Anyone for citizen speak? Moving to approval of the minutes from March 12th.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Zulis. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes? It's unanimous, four to nothing. On to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent John Phelan to make the introductions of our first presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent Colley. I would ask that Holly Concanon, Amy Gale, and Stephanie Nephew, please come up to the table. We'd like to welcome Holly Concanon, who is one of our curriculum coordinators at the Cunningham and Colicott School, Stephanie Nephew, curriculum coordinator at the Tucker School, and Amy Gale, curriculum coordinator at the Glover School, as well as ELA coordinator at the Pierce Middle School. We are very, very excited to have these three professionals and administrators report out on our early literacy initiative that was part of our advancement budget 1.0, which we are working through this school year. It's very exciting to see the success in the implementation of this initiative that was supported by the school committee, the Warren Committee, and with great budget funds this year. So, thank you to Holly, Stephanie, and Amy for being here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. It's really exciting to share with you this evening the great strides that our young students have made this year as a result of the district's early literacy initiative. As you can see from the slide, early identification and prevention are paramount to the success of students as they move through the grades. You will hear tonight how, through the early literacy initiative, we have done just this. The district has allocated very generous resources to support all students, to identify struggling learners, and to provide, excuse me, to provide interventions in hopes of having all children reach proficiency by grade three. Our initiatives for year one were as follows. We launched Reader's Workshop with great success in kindergarten through grade five. We provided targeted professional development outside of the classroom, and also over-the-shoulder coaching inside the classroom to support teachers in the implementation of Reader's Workshop. We implemented a district-wide comprehensive assessment system in grades kindergarten through seven, and we increased support for struggling students with the addition of one more reading specialist at the elementary level. So, the backbone of the work that we did was centered around Reader's Workshop. What is Reader's Workshop? Reader's Workshop is an instructional model that combines explicit instruction by the teacher, and this is instruction that is informed by both formal data, the assessments that we do across grade levels, but also informal anecdotal data that teachers are gathering day-to-day in the classroom. And there's extended time for children to read and write at the level that they are. We call them "just write books" in the elementary grades. Reader's Workshop is also a way to naturally differentiate instruction to meet the needs of all learners. On any given day in a Reader's Workshop classroom, you'll see teachers working with the whole group of students, you'll see them working with small groups and strategy and guided reading groups, and you'll also see teachers conferring one-on-one with students. Reader's Workshop truly allows students to engage with text in a meaningful way and be part of a community of readers and writers. I'm now going to turn it over to Stephanie, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the professional development that we did this year.
So, the Reader's Workshop model was new to some teachers, and so it was incredibly important for us to provide as many professional development opportunities for teachers to ensure that they got the supports they needed as they launched the Reader's Workshop. So, we utilized both the, an August professional development day and an October day to ensure there was consistency across the board, the entire elementary staff worked together. We also embedded throughout the school year, five-hour and 10-hour strands, teachers were meeting after school on Saturdays with specific focus areas, so teachers could get what they needed as they were moving through the units and the program. In addition, we had Martha Winneker, a outside consultant, who came in to support the work. She provided professional development sessions, as well as went to the schools on a regular basis to provide feedback to teachers, to coach in classrooms, and to give them the supports they needed to feel comfortable as we launched Reader's Workshop. In addition, as we were implementing the assessments, we utilized data meetings to also support the work and provide professional development within those sessions. There we go. Some of the things that we did within that work is to really focus on the topics that would be important for, for students to be successful, so really looking at the components of Reader's Workshop. Creating a classroom culture that supports independent reading habits was a really important piece to the work. We purchased the Lucy Cawkins units of study, and so it was important to provide support for teachers as they unpacked those units and understood the focus areas, how they aligned to the Common Core standards, and what those mini lessons should look like in order to be successful. One piece of the work in a Reader's Workshop is conferring with kids. As students are working independently and reading books, teachers are meeting with students and having conferencing and getting some information about the type of reader that each individual student is, so they can provide some direct and targeted instruction. So, we really focused on that in terms of making sure that those conferences were successful, as well as looked at effective small group instruction. The whole idea around the work is to understand what areas of need students have, direct those focus areas in small groups, so that we can really target instruction for individual One of the big projects that we worked on this year was to ensure that we had some common assessments throughout the year, so that we could understand our readers, as well as ensure that we were seeing growth within all of our students. So, for grades K through 2, every student had the Fanta-Simpinell Benchmark Assessment, both in September as well as in February, to track their growth. And the Fanta-Simpinell, we did do a training for entire, the entire staff in September, and it is a pretty intensive assessment. You work with each individual student individually and understand their reading level. It identifies their fluency, their accuracy, and their comprehension, and it really gives us very specific target instruction areas for each individual student. In addition, for our 3 through 5 students, and actually extended all the way to 7th grade, we've developed a system where both in September and February, we administer the SRI, the Scholastic Reading Inventory, which again helps us understand what level reader our students are. And for students that were below benchmark, we also did the Fanta-Simpinell to get some more information around their reading skills. When we had our data meetings, we talked about each individual student and their needs. We had our reading specialists as part of a team to discuss that, and so together we crafted action plans to ensure we were meeting each and every student's individual needs. This year, we were fortunate enough to have an additional reading specialist join our team, and I think what ended up happening is we really developed a team. This year, in addition to a reading specialist, we also restructured how we do curriculum leadership at the elementary level. And so, instead of one coordinator sort of overseeing the English Language Arts Program, we now have three people overseeing the program. We now have three reading specialists, which includes one reading specialist funded through Title I. So, we have a team of six people that meet regularly to kind of talk about these initiatives, what's working, what's not, how to shift and change for improvement. And I think, as a result, we're getting a lot of positive feedback in terms of making the right steps and the right changes for success.
So, I have, I have the pleasure of reflecting on the year's work, and I'm basically going to summarize what our teachers have told us in our last professional development meeting, which consisted of all grade 1 and 2 teachers from the district. One of the photographs you saw included three teachers, and that represented three different schools. So, to bring them together and have a consistent message was pretty powerful, and it was consistent across all four elementary schools. So, when we reflected on Reader's Workshop, one of the exercises we went through was to think about how we used to teach, and now what's happening in our classrooms. In all schools, teachers said that they used to teach everybody with the same materials. They had a text that they followed along, they had a story that every student read. Teachers talked the whole time during a mini lesson. They were working really hard and speaking a lot and spending more time talking than listening. They really relied on a teacher's guide that went with a book, and they had a long block of phonics with less time for children to explore literature. Now, and again, this was consistent across all schools, now teachers said that they use books that are matched to readers. In a second grade class, you may have a student reading a book on a Level C, you may have a student reading a book on a Level M, all working on the same strategy, but with text that's appropriate for them. Now, teachers hear children talking more, which is appropriate when you look at the Common Core and the expectations for listening, speaking, and also presenting. You'll hear kids presenting at a very young age now. Teachers use more variety to meet the needs of all readers, and they create lesson plans based on the conference notes. You heard Amy and Stephanie talk about how important conferring is in the Reader's Workshop. It's not just a practice of taking notes, but it's using those notes to then create strategy groups and guided reading groups. And also, teaching phonics and word study, it happens within the lesson with words that are appropriate and needed, not just a, you know, a blanket list of words for everybody. So, you may see in one class, students working on different types of words and word endings. So, major shifts, and they also talked a lot about how the technology has helped them organize the notes that they take, and just how more familiar they're becoming with materials and resources out there, where before they didn't have to do so much. So, the data, it's something that I was happy to present to you. Here we have the first grade reading proficiency data, and you'll see two graphs, one from September and one from February. It is important to note that the benchmark did change. It's not a consistent benchmark. As the students grow and develop their reading skills, the benchmark also changes. So, in September, you can see that we had 32% of our first graders who were not proficient. So, 68% of the students were proficient. What's important to note here, and the slide doesn't, doesn't show, is that in that blue section, the not proficient represents children who may have been one level below, or may have been three levels below. So, there's quite a range within that not proficient. There's also quite a range within the proficient. We had many students reading far above grade level, which was eye-opening to many of the teachers who thankfully were now using very texts. In February, you can see that the not proficient was reduced again to 19%. But again, what these slides don't show are the stories that each one of us could say about the kids in our school. We can tell you who is not proficient, we can also tell you how much progress they have made. So, when I see that, I don't see that 19% hasn't made progress. I know that, you know, Student A maybe has learned more than a year and a half's worth of work in one year, but still isn't where they need to be, but they will get there. And we can identify those students, and we can talk about those stories, because we do have a team of people following the students. But in any case, 81% of our first graders as of February are proficient. In second grade, we see a similar story. The 19% of not proficient has been reduced to 11%. We're making great progress. Again, the blue is made up of many stories that we could tell you, and they are children that are growing. If there are students who are making very little progress, we know them even better, we have supports in place for them, whether through our reading specialists, or flexible grouping within the classroom, or potential work that they can do outside of the classroom. We've identified for that, them, we've identified supports for those kids. And in general, grades 1 and 2, again, 73% proficient in September, has increased to 85%, and we have 15% of our population not there, but on their way. So, we're proud of the work that we've done. It's really amazing to see the progress and the many changes that have taken place in such a short amount of time. Since we have committed to Reader's Workshop, the practice has changed, the resources have changed, the conversation has changed, but we still have a lot of work to do, and thankfully, we have the resources to get started on that. This summer, we're excited to introduce a summer institute for grades 3 through 5. We actually have one day booked for all grades to come and learn about the Lucy Cawkins units of study to enhance writing instruction. We also have continued, continued targeted professional development, again, through, for grades K through 5, with Reader's Workshop as well, as well as Writer's Workshop. We'll continue with our data analysis meetings. We still have some work to do at the end of this year, and we'll be pulling teachers to look at our results and also form next steps based on that. We are thrilled to hear that Martha Winneker will be back with us, and we'll support our grade 3 teachers next year to grow the program into grade 3. Grade 1 and 2 teachers are off and running, we'll continue to support them, but Martha Winneker will really make sure that third grade teachers know what's expected. And then, we are happy to implement units of study for writing, again, using the Cawkins materials, which will support everything that's happening in Writer's Workshop. It will also give teachers what they need to know what's expected in writing for those grades as well. So, again, thank you for all the support. This is a great news story. It's fun to come here and be able to share this with you, but we recognize that there were resources put in place for us to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any thoughts, anyone? Ms. Padera?
Great work from a great group of people, but I just have a couple of questions, and because it just gets me thinking about a lot of the things you're doing, which I think are so exciting, and, you know, what you said, Ms. Concanon, about knowing exactly where everybody is, and even though they might be still in this, this section of the pie, they're still progressing, and you guys know that. So, it kind of gets me thinking, too, is there anything we could implement when we're doing the screening for incoming kindergarteners to identify those students even earlier that might need help, that are not at proficient reading early, and, you know, getting to those even over the, those kids over the summer before they come here?
I think those, for us, those are the people who we have seen are making the most progress, so they may have jumped three or four levels, but they're still not at proficient. So, I think identifying students who don't have literacy experiences is very important, and just to be able to expose what the community has to offer. The Milton Public Library has been so supportive of the work we do. They are also able to talk about levels of books, and they're able to recommend appropriate books for readers. But I think if we were to identify families who don't have literacy experiences, to highlight some that, that are reachable for them, because there is a lot in the community that people may not know about.
Great. And then, if I can just follow up one more question.
Yep.
The testing results, are those reported to parents? And if, if they are, how, how are you doing that?
The testing results definitely get incorporated into report cards in terms of how students are doing at, in, within their reading, as well as discussed during conferences. We don't emphasize, you know, like a specific score, but really sort of more emphasize where the student is, what the areas are in terms of their reading, and what needs to be worked on for progress.
So, it's generally just used by the teacher to kind of give benchmarks on how their student's doing, you know, not necessarily like, these are their scores, but really interpreting how they're doing through some of the things they've been, they've been doing in the classroom, as well as scores they've been using. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's one, and it is also one data point to understand the child, and that's always really important to, to keep in mind.
May I add something to that answer? The feedback that you received, I thought that was valuable from the teachers, and the feedback from the coordinators and the teachers. The program this year provided the elementary teachers with more information about students than they've ever had before. So, the feedback from individual teachers, to me, was when I sat down with parents, these programs equipped me with actual data and information that I really never had before to discuss, to lead parent conferences, to have parent conversations.
I just have one last question, if it's okay. The writing program that you're, for the next step, what grades is, will that be for all grades, or? Yeah, go ahead.
So, yes, we will be implementing the Lucy Cawkins Writer's Units of Study in grades kindergarten through grade 5, and you'll notice on the presentation, it says Phase 1. This is the exploratory phase, where the teachers are provided with the materials. The three of us will provide professional development throughout the year in terms of gaining familiarity with the materials, and also in terms of identifying some of those classrooms that are meeting with great success with those materials, so that we can capitalize on that sort of for Phase 2, the following year, when the expectation grows in terms of implementation of those units of study.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Great information.
Maggie Jones?
I had two things that stood out for me, and one was really the, I'm so glad you talked about the growth, you know, that here's a section of this, because I think it can get very discouraging for teachers and parents and kids, to always feel like they're in the warning or needs improvement and whatnot.
Right.
And I really think that the growth, if you're at this level in the highest, but you go up to here, or this level at the lowest, and you go up to here, I think the growth piece of that is just a really encouraging piece that I like to hear about. And the other thing was, is to really hear, is quite a relief to hear about how you're working so hard to get away from the cookie cutter approach, you know, one book for everybody to read from, and to read, you know, people talk about differentiated instruction, and, you know, what I, I heard this tonight from you guys.
Yeah.
That it really felt like that's what that was, and what a sigh of relief.
Right.
So, those are the two things that really stood out for me.
And it's, it's hard work to implement, and so providing teachers the materials, as well as the professional development, to understand how to do it well is key to implement it successfully. But it is ultimately going to be the best thing for students and student achievement. Yeah.
James?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on, on something that Holly said in response to Becky's question, which was the partnership between the Milton Public Library and Milton Public Schools. I think you were referring to the library program, and we're in the second year now of the partnership between the library and the schools, going jointly into classes and teaching them about the libraries, and it's funded by the Milton Public, Milton Library Foundation. And I, I wonder if, following up on Becky's question, if, if there may be a possibility to do something similar with respect to the pre-K students, and involve the Milton Public Library in reaching out to the pre-K students as well, and perhaps seeking funding from Milton Public, Milton Library Foundation for that as well. So, that's, that's one thing that struck me. I don't know if that's something that you all have thought about, but it may be something you might, you might do.
So, I just had the good fortune of attending a workshop called Strategies for Children at the, at the Children's Museum, and actually with Becky, and a lot of it talked about how to provide resources in a community that doesn't have the resources. And what was highlighted for me is that we have so many of those resources already active, it's just a matter of communicating that to the public. For example, I am a kindergarten parent, I am a coordinator. I had no idea how much the Milton Public Library does, and how much they offer to families for free. A lot of the, the technology that people may not have access to, they can use for free at the library. It's a beautiful space. The librarians, the children's librarians are up to date on the latest practices, but for me, it's a matter of communicating that to the public, and really celebrating the good work that, that is done there. I think the location is pretty accessible to people, but again, getting to know it is probably half the battle, and like I said, I had no idea how much was going on up there. There are regular read-alouds with the librarian. That experience alone is life-changing for a reader. Learning how to sit and listen and respond and think and predict at a young age really forms the way they behave when they get to school. So, I think, you know, we've had conversations on the side, working to identify. We may know some families already based on siblings' experiences, but there are families out there that we don't know how to identify yet, but if we could, it could make a major difference in their education. So, it's something that we're thinking about. A team of us went and will, will continue to brainstorm how to reach out to those families, but the identification is probably the hardest part.
And then, one other question, and it may be premature, given the fact that our budget was just approved last Thursday night, but have you, have you begun to map out what, what to do with the funds for next year in early, early literacy? And it may be premature to preview that, but, but if you have, it'd be good to know.
We're definitely looking to continue to grow the program, certainly with specialist support, certainly with continuing to purchase materials, the Lucy Cawkins Units of Study for writing, those need to be purchased, as well as the continued support of our consultant, Martha Winneker. One of the greatest needs that we've identified is to grow the amount of literature that we available for students in the schools as well. So, classrooms in all of the elementary buildings, you know, we really want to make sure we have multiple books at every single level, so that we have enough for every kiddo to read. We want to make sure that teachers have rich classroom libraries filled with fiction and nonfiction, as well as books that tie into some of the content studies that they do in both history and science. And so, I think the purchasing of literature is going to be a huge part of continuing to grow this initiative.
Which were exactly the purchases in the advancement budget for FY '15.
It's funny how that works.
[laughing]
Thank you very much.
Ms. Sheridan?
Well, thank you for this presentation. I think that you three are the Milton Public School version of the literacy dream team, because you each bring a wealth of information and experience with us, and we are so fortunate to have you. And we are so fortunate to have you working with our children and working with our teachers. And I want to say thank you for that. I'm a huge fan of Reader's Workshop and have been for years. I think, Stephanie, you just kind of took one of my lines, but it is very hard work. It's it sounds like it's just an easy shift, but there's a lot of work that goes into changing. It's not only, you know, moving from one textbook to multiple books. It's it's a whole, really a paradigm shift in in your thinking and your practice. And so with the support that you all are giving them, I think that the teachers are to be congratulated for all the work that they've done this year. And that really wouldn't happen without the concerted effort on your part and also the leadership and the professional development, because that is key, as you as you just said, Stephanie. I also think that one of the huge benefits of, in my experience of Reader's Workshop, is truly building stamina in children's reading. Because so often in school, they pick up a book, they read for a few minutes, they put it down, they're on to the next thing. But that's a huge change in 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 reading today. And it comes through in the conferencing that the teachers do. And I'd like you just to talk a little bit, I I happen to think that the conferencing is one of the most powerful pieces of of Reader's Workshop. But if you could talk a little bit about that, but just to go back to to my point about the stamina, it's the just write books and it's pushing them to read all genres. And as you said, especially the nonfiction. But all of that information that's gathered from the conferencing is so important. So maybe you can speak a little bit to to that. And also, if you could just talk a little bit more about the guided reading level. So you were saying, Holly, that, you know, there are ranges that are for each grade level. And I think it's helpful for people at home that are watching this that don't have the literacy background to really understand what that means, how big of a range it is. And when you say that children have, you know, that that piece of the pie has decreased, it's way more than just that piece of the pie has decreased, because as you said, the bar has been raised. So maybe you could just flesh that out a little bit more for people at home. Sorry.
Confering with student readers and writers is a very complex task. And it requires a lot on the part of the teacher as well as on the part of the the child. And I think it gets better through practice. And I think teachers are doing a lot of practicing with it right now. One of the things that we like to say when we confer with kids is that we're teaching the reader. We're not teaching the reading. We're not sitting down to teach them about this book. We're teaching them strategies that will help them with all books. And that's really the goal of the conference, that you don't want to sit down and correct them on every single word that they read. You want to give them strategies to be able to do that on their own. And you might let some errors go in an effort to really focus in on one strategy that you want to hit with that kiddo. It's also an opportunity for the teacher to gain a comfort level and get to know the reader. Who's this kid? What do they like? What do they, what's getting them fired up? So they can help steer them to those just write books, which I think is so very, very important. If you don't know your readers, you can't get them in those books that they really choose to read voraciously. But teachers certainly have expressed the need and the want for more professional development around conferring. And in our meetings with Martha Winneker, we've absolutely talked about that. And watching videos of effective conferences and watching Martha Winneker confer with students so that they can really provide for them those effective strategies that will help them in any book as they move on, you know, through middle school, high school, and beyond.
In terms of the reading levels, reading research shows that students make progress when they are reading at the the right level, the just right book. And what that is, is that they're able to read the the text with a pretty high level of accuracy. There's very little error in terms of what they're reading. So they're not floundering at every single word. In terms of fluency, they're able to move through the text. And they're able to, as they finish the text, be able to tell you some level of understanding of what they read. So when we assess students and we do the Fuentes and Pennell, we're looking at those three areas. We want to make sure that they're at a level of accuracy where they aren't missing multiple words within a sentence, that they're able to rude read with some level of fluency. And that when they finish the text, that they'll be able to tell you some level of information around what they read, their comprehension. And as we go through the levels, that level of comprehension gets more complex. So instead of that just basic comprehension, be able to retell what they what they read, be able to make some sense, read between the lines, and have some higher level thinking around that text, which gets more complex. So even when you move levels and you're at a higher level in third or fourth or fifth grade, what we're teaching them looks different because what they're able to do with the text is different. And so that helps us understand if they're at a level M or an L, it gives us a very specific area of focus that we should be instructing them on. And so it's really important, if we want students to make progress, that when they're practicing reading skills, that they're reading at that just write book. Because what research tells us is that when they're reading, most of the work that they're doing independently is done in that type of text, that's when they're going to make most progress. And so it's so important for us to understand what that level is for each individual child so we can guide them to select books that are at their level so that as they're reading, they're able to practice the skills that we're teaching with effectiveness.
And for the parent at home who who wants to know a level right now, I think one of the best predictors is to find the book that your child loves to read and can read and feels good about it and wants to read it. And if you're so inclined, you could easily look up that book online through Google and it will give you a level. But the book that a child wants and enjoys is is probably right around a level for independent reading. When working with the teacher, the teacher's going to bump up that level because the teacher is there to support the reader and to push the reader to the next level. The range in grade one, you know, we've had readers started below an A who are far beyond an I right now. So it's it's amazing to see the progress that they're making and can make. But again, I think the best thing that parents and teachers can do is get to know the reader, help them love reading, and the natural reaction is that kids will want to read and and that will help the progress even more.
Thank you. I think success builds success, and that's exactly what this is set out to do. Do you use the the rule of five finger, five finger rule? So if they pick up a book and they start to read and there are five hard words in that page, then it's probably not a just write book. So just a little share. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks. I I think this is a really important presentation, this one and and the next one that we're about to hear. And these are obviously the initiatives that we've decided as a district are the most important. And I think it's it's gratifying for us, but it's important for parents and those watching to know that these dollars are being well spent, but also that we're making progress. That's great. So thank you. I I want to make sure that two good ideas don't get lost. So if you would think a little bit more about entering kindergarteners, whether there is a way to to reach out to them and maybe empower them over the summer, that would be great, and ask the superintendent to do that as well. And second, the superintendent, if you would, reach out to the Milton Public Library and see whether there are ways that they could do some outreach to pre-K. And we've acknowledged that this is actually a role that we need to fill and it's in our advancement budget. But if we could get a head start on those, that would be great.
So in in relation to the pre-K, when everyone comes up to the kindergarten screening on June 10, 11, 12, and 13, they, parents will be given a survey. And all those students at that screening will not be giving a reading assessment because they're too young for that. What we do is, and we can review the questions, but the questions to the parents are important. Did your child have an organized preschool experience? You know, how many books are in your home? There's certain questions that we can ask of parents and families that could give us indicators that we could then call out folk folks that we would want to contact and target to see if they needed any additional support prior to entering kindergarten. So we will review that that survey because I believe that there's certain questions and topics and items that we can ask parents to speak to that can give us ideas as to whether their child is school-ready or not or could use an organized approach to a literature-rich environment, which could be provided at the library or which could be provided somewhere else. So that would be part of what we hope to do this this screening coming up this year. And and just to round out some of what Holly, Stephanie, and Amy are saying is that it really is very, very satisfying to go from creating a list of priorities to informing the school committee as to what they are, to having the school committee support them with every inch of their their work and energy, to this warrant committee in town meeting, to identify materials, positions, professional development, and to have it all come together in ten slides to show actual progress of actual children that we serve in the town that we live. And we will do so again when the science folks come up. But this is a, the advancement budget is a success story for the Milton Public Schools in the Milton community. The folks in front of you are a success story, but the most important people are the teachers and the students who are doing all that hard work. The teachers with that big shift in how they prepare and how they execute their lessons daily, which is a lot more work than it was last year. And the students who are being asked to do a lot more work in first grade. They have to talk about books. They have to read longer. They actually have to understand more. And so and they're doing that work. And so this team of folks in front of you and the team behind them in each of your elementary schools did a fabulous amount of work. But it started at this table with a group of school committee members and a superintendent that supported it. But it ends up in the classroom where where students are making really accelerated progress in first and second grade. And that thirteen percent, that's now our grade two data, we would expect to be here next year and hope that that's a zero percent or a very small percent of grade folks going out of grade three when they take that that final exam. So very, very successful story. I appreciate the time that you have put into it and your thought. And I appreciate the support of the committee and Superintendent Gormley for allowing this work to be done every day this year.
And I've said publicly, John worked collaboratively with this team. I call it a train that's very strong, moving very fast with all of the children on Milton. On that train, as John said, all of the teachers and new people really directing the direction. And to John's point, in the advancement budget for next year, filling out the team that you spoke to, the third grade reading specialist and deploying those services, it made me very happy when you said you feel like you have a team and a team, a team is strong. And it's not one person with a vision, it's the entire district. And again, John has led and worked collaboratively, and all of you deserve a tremendous amount of credit. As John said, in the end, it's the students who benefit.
So what I would say to you and and to Christine, Bernadette, and Ed, who are waiting to make their presentation, we hope that you understand, that we understand how valuable you are and how valued you are. You're at the heart of every critical initiative that we're engaged in, and we understand that and we get it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point in time, we'd like to introduce and call to the table Middle School Science Curriculum Coordinator Christine Chiopetta, Elementary Science Coordinator Bernadette Moonen, and Milton High School Science Department Head Edwin Mulvey.
Remember you're on television.
Yeah, I know. I know. I thought.
Becky, Becky, can you get that for Mike, please?
That would be really embarrassing.
And before Mr. Phelan introduces, we should say in the audience, we have Dr. Karen Spalding, PS Middle School Principal, who is the cheerleader of all these initiatives and has come as a sign of support to all these talented professionals.
You can take the principal out of the science program, but you can't take the science out of the principal? Is that how it goes? The, this is another example for the viewing public and for the school committee for the Milton Public Schools to demonstrate their use, effective use of the advancement budget 1.0 that was put in place in the science content area in elementary, middle, and high school. And we are very, very happy to have a trio of professionals who do exemplary work each day in Ms. Moonen, Mrs. Chiopetta, and Mr. Mulvey. And they're here to present to you how the work was organized this year and how the advancement 1.0 funds that were dedicated to science were utilized and implemented. So thank you for being here.
Good evening, and thank you for welcoming Christie, Ed, and I tonight to share with you the great work that's been happening in the world of science here in Milton, K to 12. Tonight, we will be sharing with you a snapshot of the data at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Then we're excited to share with you the great work that's been happening in our schools thanks to advancement budget 1.0. And then we will share our plans moving forward with advancement budget 2.0 in mind. Here you can see a graph that represents the past four years of data from the fifth grade science MCAS. You can see here that there has been a slight improvement in the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced, but not quite at the at the level of achievement that we're hoping for. We're moving in the right direction, but just, we have high expectations for our students and we know that they can do better. Here you can see for the past three years, the percentage of students that scored proficient or higher on the science MCAS in grade five as compared to the state. And you can see that Milton is outperforming the state. But again, we do have high expectations for our students and we know that they should and could do better on this. So there's still work to be done.
As you, sorry. As you look at the eighth grade MCAS science data, you'll notice that the middle school is right around the state average. We're only slightly above. Given our MCAS scores for the eighth grade, for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade on English, Language Arts, and Mathematics, we would expect these scores to be much higher. We know that our students have a greater increase over the state average in those areas. And given the trends across the straight, the state, it should be the same for science. So it's with that in mind that we have some incredible urgency around our science data.
So here we see the biology MCAS data for the last three years at Milton High School. And we can see that although the, I don't know why I'm there, but the state averages are not there, but we we are above the state average in all of those categories. And you can see that the both the passing rate and the percentage of students in the advanced proficient area is increased considerably over that time. And we are very proud of the biology team at Milton High School. And we acknowledge their hard work and their thoughtful, innovative approaches to creating new protocols and programs to meet the needs of our incoming freshmen. And as you can see, it does appear to be working. Okay, this slide shows how we've been doing in the AP tests over the last three years. Here, we can see that both the average score and the percentage of students with passing scores has improved significantly, even though and even though an increasing percentage of our students are taking the AP tests. And see that in biology, the score has gone from an average of 2.33 to 3.19. Chemistry, the average score went from 1.78 to 2.83. And in physics, it went from 2.33 to 3.11. And the passing rates for biology went from forty-four percent to seventy-seven percent. Chemistry, the passing rate from twenty-eight to fifty. And the passing rate in physics went from thirty-nine to seventy-eight.
Would you explain to the viewing public what the passing rate means in the world of advanced placement?
Yes. For those who don't know, AP tests are scored on a scale of one to five. And a score of three in general is what's considered to be a passing grade. And a score of three, in general, is what's considered to be a passing grade. So, you can see that we're almost there as an average across the board. There's a, there are, I should mention too, as we're talking about the AP scores, that there's a significant change going on at the college boards around AP testing. Starting a few years ago, all of the science subjects began to be updated. So, biology was first, and then chemistry was this year, and physics is up for revision next year. So, as you might imagine, the AP teachers need to know all about these changes so they can make adjustments to their approaches to the curriculum. In addition, as a system, we encourage more students to participate in AP courses. And the teachers need to realign the curriculum in the courses that we call feeder courses to the AP courses in order to provide those students with a background to give them the best possibility for success. So, for example, college prep biology and honors biology are both feeder courses for AP biology, and their curriculum needs to be adjusted. I am happy to report that all of the teachers involved in AP courses have attended or are attending summer institutes to help them prepare. And additionally, teachers of the feeder courses are attending workshops like the Laying the Foundation workshop to help them to make the changes in the feeder courses. Although we're not thoroughly satisfied with the results, we are making significant progress in this area as well. And we thank you for your support in providing funding for these important professional development opportunities.
So, prior to all of our arrival on the scene, the leadership team met last year and identified priorities for the district. We're happy to say that science, based on the results that you saw, was one of those priorities. And we are very excited as science administrators for the support that we've been given to create a real presence for science here in the Milton Public Schools. The data shows that we have areas of strength, but we know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So, we'd like to show you what we've done with Advancement Budget 1.0. While you'll remember the, while you remember, the bulk of the money went to the middle school for the purchase of new curriculum, materials, and for professional development. The budget also allotted money for the hiring of an elementary science coordinator and for support of the elementary STEM curriculum at grades one and two. Bernadette's going to tell you a little bit more about those in a few minutes, but I'd like to share with you the exciting things we've been doing at the middle school this This slide outlines the new curriculum plan for the middle school based on the purchases that were made with the Advancement Budget and with the new Massachusetts Science Technology and Engineering Frameworks that were released in December. What you see here is a two-year plan for a rollout of the new curriculum, and what we have is an integrated approach to science, where each grade level will have a life science, a physical science, and an earth science unit. With these new units, one of the strengths that we have now, based on the new purchases, is that we're able to create consistency across the grade level. So, all of our teachers are teaching with the same materials and have access to the same lessons, so that any student, no matter what team you're on in the middle school, will have the same experiences in science. So, as you leave sixth grade and go to seventh grade, your teachers will know that they can be assured that you've had a common set of experiences. One highlight that I can just think of from this year is that, based on the purchases of the Advancement Budget, all sixth grade students at the Pierce had the opportunity to look at microorganisms and do this great investigation using microscopes in their sixth grade classrooms. So, this was a change that we were able to implement this year based on some microscopes purchased with the budget. With the hiring of the elementary coordinator, a benefit that we were able to see at the middle school was that the position that was once a K-12 position has now become a six through twelve position, split between Ed and myself, which across the district has allowed more science administrator support for all of our science teachers. At the middle school, I've spent most of my time this year observing in classrooms, talking with teachers, talking with students about the science that's happening in classrooms to be able to inform our decisions. As teams, I've met with all of the science teachers biweekly to talk about the new curriculum, to talk about how it's going, to make plans for adjustments, and to do some professional development around the new units that are to come. The Times also allowed us to work together and have professional development time, both during and after school, and we're able to work on curriculum alignment to plan for the future with the new standards that we've been presented with. The highlight, I would say, of our work this year has been developing common assessments. So, for each of the units that you see here, and for the units that we have that we haven't updated yet, we created a common assessment that all teachers administered. And while the data may not have been what we hoped, what we have now is some baseline data that will allow us to make adjustments for the future. The assessments that we developed were aligned to the MCAS, so we hopefully now, we should be able to identify the areas that we need to target, and it's given us some real starting points for the work going forward. We know that this work is just beginning at the middle school, but thanks to the Advancement Budget, we've been able to purchase resources and find the time for professional development that's allowed us to dig deep into a redesign. So, thank you for your support. We have a lot more to do, but we appreciate it.
This year has been an exciting one in the elementary schools as far as science goes. If you were to go into the Colicott or Cunningham or Glover or Tucker School and walk through the halls, you can tell that there's a buzz about science going on between teachers and amongst students, and it's, as a science coordinator, it's what you wish for. So, I'm looking forward to continuing that momentum in the years to come. Thanks to Advancement Budget 1.0, as Christie mentioned earlier, we have been able to continue the STEM program in the grade one and two classrooms in the English Innovation Pathway, and that's been a delight to be a part of. The first grade teachers have continued the work they began last year, and the first graders continue to amaze us with their ability to think and act as first grade engineers using the Lego We Do materials. Teachers in both first and second grade were provided with materials, professional development, and continuous and consistent in-class support this year. Second grade teachers have hit the ground running with the STEM program in their rooms using, again, the Lego We Do program. It's been so nice to watch the second graders grow into second grade programmers and build upon the skills they learned in first grade. They are now working with the Lego products to build simple robots and then plug them into computers and use a developmentally appropriate computer programming software to actually build a computer program to make their robot move and make sound. So, they are excited about it, the teachers are excited about it, and it's nice to see the progression from grade one to grade two. So, thank you for your support with materials, professional development, and supporting those first and second grade teachers. Advancement Budget 1.0 also allowed for the elementary science coordinator position. And I feel so fortunate to be working for the Milton Public Schools in this capacity. It has been such a tremendous experience for me. I feel, I've thoroughly enjoyed doing the important and productive work of supporting the teachers, not just for STEM, but in the general science curriculum, K-5. Allocating a science coordinator just for the elementary schools, I think, is so important, and it's proven to be very beneficial because I am able to spend time in each school every week in a predictable way. The teachers know when I'll be in their building and where to find me, and they know that they can contact me via email, but that I'll be back in the Glover School every Thursday. Whereas the model before, the science coordinator had to support teachers at all grade levels, so it was more difficult to provide consistent and ongoing support in a meaningful way. So, it's, it's been a pleasure working with the teachers. I've been able to establish professional and collaborative relationships with the teachers and have meaningful conversations around curriculum and instruction, similar to what Christie had mentioned in the work that she is doing, and meeting with grade-level teams at their common planning time and talking about what they're doing in science now and what they wish they could be doing, and thinking about areas of need going forward. As Christie was talking about the common assessments that they're developing, that is a huge need in the elementary school, and it's something we're thinking about going forward, just to be able to identify those students who may need extra support. And so, we're looking forward to that in the years to come. So, that leads me to my next slide, which is looking ahead and thinking about Advancement Budget 2.0. So, in my work this year in the elementary schools and working with the teachers, it has become clear that we do need an updated science curriculum at the elementary level. So, we're looking forward to the purchase of new curriculum units for grades three through five in the future. We're looking to purchase units from Foss, which will feed right into the middle school. Those are the units that Christie was referring to earlier. So, that will create a nice vertical alignment and a connection between the elementary and middle school. These units are aligned with the standards. They've been recently revised. We're purchasing the most current and newest version of these units. They are inquiry-based, and they are user-friendly. They also have end-of-unit assessments that we will likely be using. The students can even take assessments online, and then the data is analyzed. So, it will be nice to use that as a point of reference in informing instruction decisions for the teachers. It also uses technology in the lesson. So, when we think about incorporating technology into science instruction, there are lessons that you can incorporate right on the interactive whiteboard in the classroom, or student books that they can read on Chromebooks or iPads. So, we're looking forward to incorporating more technology in our science instruction. This I just wanted to include because it's a visual representation of the thought process I've been going through this year in planning for the future and how the rollout might look in the years ahead for a new curriculum at the elementary level. I have been very fortunate this year to work closely with both Ed and Christie. We find time to get together and talk about how things are going at the different levels and see similarities and differences. And I've got to watch Christie and the middle school roll out their new curriculum units this year and see the struggles and triumphs that they've, that they have had. And so, I'm planning on taking a similar approach at the elementary school. This chart shows that the rollout plan is multi-year. So, some units will be rolled out in the next school year, and the remaining units will be rolled out the following year. You can see that there's a clear scope and sequence as to when in the school year these units will be taught, and that, as Christie referred to before, it's a well-rounded program. So, there'll be a life science unit, an earth science unit, and a physical science unit at each grade level. And the teachers will also be receiving professional development and in-class support on an ongoing basis.
So, we've been hearing about the impressive investment in materials and the changes in curriculum that are underway in the elementary and the middle schools. So, let me point out that this is just absolutely wonderful news for the high school. Students who are interested in science, students who are more familiar with the scientific method, accustomed to logical problem-solving, will be far better able to absorb the rich curriculum that's available to them at the high school. So, thank you from the teachers at the high school for supporting the rest of the system. So, in Advancement 2.0 at the high school, there are two major initiatives. First is a major upgrade to the biotech lab. So, let me begin by saying that we are extremely fortunate to have a biotech lab to upgrade. The biotech program has put us in the forefront of public schools, and it provides our students with many unique, awesome, and exciting opportunities. So, part of the 2.0 budget's being used to purchase some new and some lovingly-used equipment for the biotech lab. Among the items that we are purchasing are a gel imager, a new plate reader, an automated protein purification unit, and some high-speed centrifuges. Now, if you don't know what those are, do not be concerned. I admit that I'm a physics teacher by training, and I certainly am not an expert in this area, but I do watch TV. So, if you watch an episode of any forensic crime drama from seven years ago, and that's when we opened our lab, and then you watch a current episode, you'll notice that there are huge changes in what they're able to do and how quickly they're able to do that. So, seven years ago, it took a week to get a DNA match on a suspect. And now, they arrest the bad guy after lunch. Not only will this equipment allow our students to do much more and to have a truly authentic experience, but from an educational standpoint, it makes it possible for students to do these tasks within the time allotted for class. The older equipment had a lot of waiting time built into it. Now, in this next part, I'll be quoting, I'll be quoting our resident expert, Mr. Paul Damiani. But first, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Paul has become very skilled in negotiating with biotech companies on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, and we got some very good deals. So, I asked Mr. D. to give me a few examples of what the new equipment does. I asked him to be not too technical, tell me in English, and so that we could understand. And I think he's still talking. It really is wonderful, though, to see teachers who are so excited and passionate about what they do. So, I chose three examples to share with you. According to Mr. D., the protein purification unit is a huge step up from the gravity columns that we currently use. Presently, he says that we put liquid into something that looks like a straw, you wait for it to flow through, it takes about forty-five minutes, and someone has to be present for the whole purification process, which sometimes takes longer than the period, and they have to start all over again. The new system is pressurized and automated. A run takes fifteen minutes, and students can start a run during class, come back if they need to, to see the results later that day or even the next day, and not lose anything. The second example is the gel imager. And the gel imager is fully automated, and it allows students to do immunology work because of the camera, that's the Charged Coupled Device Camera. I had to look that up on the net. Because it's able to observe multiple wavelengths. And currently, we do not have the capability to do that. We'll also be able to do something that's called Western Blots. For those who don't know what that is, that's a test that's used to detect specific proteins in a sample. And the third example, which I promise is the last one, is the plate reader will allow us to do experiments similar to testing for Lyme disease in someone's blood through what they call ELISA activities. That's enzyme-linked immunoabsorbent assay. I said that, that was good. That's a test that uses antibodies and color change to identify a substance. And it will also allow us to look at protein concentrations when they purify proteins in a quick and efficient way. I can tell you this, though, that the program gets rave reviews from students, former students, graduates of Milton High School when they come back, particularly those who have chosen to continue in the area of biotechnology. They tell us that they are better prepared than nearly all of their peers. So, thank you very much for your support. And the second part is to initiate the introduction of digital equipment to all science labs in order to provide students with authentic lab experiences and generate interest in STEM. Today, I'm sure you realize that digital devices are commonplace in most colleges and many workplaces. And in keeping with the Milton High School learning expectations, in particular, the one that says, "Applying tools and technology to a variety of authentic tasks," and also keeping with the district's District-Wide STEM Initiative, our students should be familiar with and competent in the use of these devices. The addition of some digital equipment will provide students in science classes with access to some of this technology. We'll be purchasing computers, digital sensors, and a software license which will allow the, a software license for a program to aid students in collecting, graphing-- software license for a program to aid students in collecting, graphing, and manipulating the data that they collect. It's also expected that this equipment will boost our STEM initiative by creating renewed interest and excitement in science classes. This is a beginning, and if it's as successful as we anticipate, will require further purchases. Once again, thank you on behalf of the students at Milton High School for your support. And if you have another minute or two, we would like to answer the question that we are sure that you are dying to ask us, which would be, what else can we do to help? And here's a list of the most common things that have come up. If we would look at the top one, Common Planning Time, that's time for the faculty to be together, to do many of the things that are in here. Develop common curriculum assessments, reflect on their students' work and data. There are any number of things. And many of the things that I mentioned, there are curriculum updates that are required by state law and just by the fact that science is a changing animal that is extremely organic. So we need more time to spend together doing the things that teachers need to do. And the second one is the support for, continued support, we would hope, for the purchase of some more digital equipment so that everyone in the department would be able to use it at the high school. And then we also have that K-2 Updated Science Curriculum, which we have already mentioned. So, thank you.
So we just want to thank you for your dedication to science education here in the Milton Public Schools and for your tremendous contribution to science and to improving the science program here in Milton. And we also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our many partners in science education. I know just this year, I've made so many connections with different people and programs that are just as invested in science as the three of us are and as you are. And it's a group effort and we're very thankful for all of your support. So, thank you.
I think it's worth reading the folks on the board.
The list states that we are thankful for the Milton Foundation for Education, Sam's Fund, Science from Scientists, Biotech, Blue Hills Bank Charitable Foundation, Code.org, the National Science Foundation, and Karen Brennan of Harvard.
Thank you. Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Thank you for that. That was a great presentation. And there were two things that I'm really appreciative of, the STEM program, even though I do wish it was STEAM with art in there, but you know, it's a wonderful thing to have the STEM program alive and flourishing. And I'm so glad to hear about the biotech lab. Mr. Damiani, we did that in a fund in need at the Milton Foundation for Education, and he killed it. He was so good at what he did on that floor that we were able to get all that money for the biotech lab. And I'm so glad it didn't go by the wayside and that it's still alive and kicking. It was one of my, both of my kids' favorite classes, and Mr. Damiani, I hope you can tell him that. But kids got so much out of it. Kids that I know that are in college now that are studying biotech talked about the bio lab being the reason they got interested in that. And that is an incredible thing to have happen. So I'm so glad it's alive and running and all the work that you're doing, but those two things really stand out for me. So thank you.
So I'd just like to thank you all again and say how appreciative I am for the work you do, but also, Ms. Moon, I'm very excited to have you on board. As you know, it's always been a continued need to, you know, it's one thing, all science teachers need support, but when you're talking about elementary teachers that are not science specialty, but they teach all subjects, so they really do need that help and support. And I'm glad that we have that in place and you've done a wonderful job this year. And thank you also for, I think you did some science fairs this year that were pretty successful. But I just have a couple of questions, and they're just minor details, actually. First, on Slide six, the MCAS Biology. In the past, we've always looked at the ratings, and there's four levels. And I didn't know if that was somewhat different because there's a passing and then the advanced or proficient. In the past, it's always been, you know, warning, needs improvement, advanced, or proficient. Is that somewhat different when you're talking about that subject in the high school?
No. Advanced up, oh, I guess I should. Perhaps we should have included those. I'm only familiar, to be honest with you, with 2013. So if we were to do some quick math, there was six percent in needed improvement, and there were no failures this year.
So six, so needs improvement is passing.
Needs improvement is passing, yes, it is.
So it's just, that's what may be confusing.
So as we can see, ninety-nine point five percent of the students actually passed.
I just wanted to clarify that because I wasn't sure, you know, we always have those same, I think everybody gets used to those same categories, so to let them know that that's, that those are the passing rates of advanced or proficient. Okay. And I think that was the big question. The only other thing, oh, I know, there's one more thing. The updated science curriculum for K through two, for under your, you know, what is still needed. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure.
Like, is it a curriculum that we're trying to align to, or is it just that need to be updated because it's been a while?
Just in the, in this year, well, first of all, in my experiences being a teacher in the Milton Public Schools, I taught first grade for the years prior to being in this position. And then in my experience this year in working with teachers and seeing what they're doing in the classrooms and what their wants and wishes are going forward in teaching science. Ed mentioned that science is ever-changing and a lot of things have changed since the last purchase of a curriculum for science in the elementary level. So it is a need. If we had everything we ever wanted, we'd have a brand-new curriculum, K to five, but we understand that's not realistic right now. We do have a good science curriculum in place, K to five, right now, but teachers are doing a lot of updating to meet the standards. And as Christie mentioned, the standards are changing. And there's a draft that was put out in December, and we're going to need to do some work to address those standards, K through five. So if I was just thinking, you know, that slide was kind of a, thinking, what would we want if we could just have anything? And when I'm planning for the next year, we are thinking about purchasing the new curriculum units for three through five. And as a former first-grade teacher, I never forget, you know, K one and two in the early childhood years and how important it is for them to have some rich science experiences in their elementary years as well. So that's what I was referring to. Did that give you enough detail?
Yeah, no, that's absolutely clear. I'm sure that I probably also want to put on there the chemistry dance that we've been working on, trying to get in there. He's done excellent work on that for me.
I thought he was going to act it out.
I've been practicing. Actually, we've been kind of working through that this year. And we have a biology teacher who is also the after-school dance club coordinator who has taken, she went to Harvard, she saw the professor who spoke there, she thought it was an absolutely fabulous idea. And she is going to take and run with that, I think, next year, so.
Well, you let me know because I will be in attendance.
Mr. Mulvey, we have to give where credit, where credit is due. Where did that idea come from?
At most, certainly. Thank you, Becky.
Well, no, thank you, because you ran with it.
But it was coincidental that Ms. Pedera went to statewide conference and brought back ideas to the district. I introduced that idea via Ms. Pedera to Mr. Mulvey, and then Mr. Mulvey brought forth that a teacher had asked him if on a Friday night and whole weekend, she could go to Harvard to be trained in just that technique. Correct, Mr. Mulvey?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's right. So pass along to the students, it's coming, next year.
Commenting on what you said, the dance teacher is actually my biology teacher, and she makes it like very like official, like she wants everyone to like know what they're doing. Like, I actually have this big bio packet that's for my MCAS. We're actually taking the final before the MCAS because whatever's on the final will probably be on the MCAS, which I felt was like pretty smart. Sadly, I won't see her tomorrow because she is doing a teacher professional. I don't know where, but I know she's probably going to learn something and she's going to probably bring it back to us.
If I could get a name out here, instead of, well, stop calling her the teacher, that's Dana Giantaccio, who is the teacher that we're talking about. An excellent biology teacher, I might add.
So how many, how many high school students do you PSA, and sadly, I won't see mine.
Thank you for that great presentation. I have so many thoughts to say, I'm going to try and be concise. These targeted coordinated positions are going to make all the difference in teaching and learning in the Milton Public Schools. Just have to say it that bluntly, I think, because as I think you said, Bernadette, it allows you each to give much more targeted support and efforts. The fact that we had someone K to twelve before really is a mind-boggling position. Who would ever want that position? Because how can you possibly be an expert at kindergarten and twelfth grade when the differences are so great? So this is a really exciting transition and change in the Milton Public Schools that I am personally really proud of. One of the things I heard you say today that I actually had no idea about was the integration of earth, life, and physical science in all of the units throughout the course of the year. And that's very exciting because I know in the past, well, maybe you can speak to why that transition was made rather than missing.
Sure. I think there was a level of integration before this year. One of the, I think there's a couple of schools of thought in science. Sometimes people do a year of earth science, a year of life, and a year of physical science. The integration has actually allowed us, for the eighth-grade teachers particularly, to revisit concepts that kids were exposed to in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so it actually made it quite natural this year for our teachers to do some support of content that students would need to know for the MCAS. And just even reviewing, it made, it was very logical to review cells before you did genetics this year, whereas if you were teaching, if they had been exposed to all of that in sixth grade, kids may not see life science again until they got to high school biology. Another strength of this model has been that developmentally, there are certain units in each of those fields that are more appropriate for the eighth grade. So it's allowed us to put, say, the introduction to what is living in sixth grade and look at genetics in the eighth grade when kids are in a better place to probably understand some of those more abstract ideas. The same with the life science and the physical science. I think, you know, there's, there's a little bit of challenge for teachers to tackle three different content areas, but our teachers have been really good sports about, even in, as I looked at our overview of the new curriculum, for some of those units, teachers are just getting new materials for content that they've already taught. But in other cases, teachers, our sixth-grade teachers this year, for example, took on a whole new content area that many of them had not taught before, light and color. So I think it's been a growing process for them, but they've really embraced it. And for some teachers, they like the change. Everybody likes being able to do life science in the spring when they can all pull something in from outside and have students have this opportunity to build on an experience that they had in a previous grade. So that's been good for them, I think.
Thank you for that example. And I think that you said earlier that the baseline data that you took is just that baseline, and don't beat yourself up on that because that's the good news when you have a transition time that, you know, you wouldn't expect to see miraculous improvement the very first year that something's rolled out. I just have one other comment that I wanted to make, and that was around the fact, just as we were saying with literacy, that the changes are monumental, really here, that the changes are monumental. We're not talking about kids working with science books anymore. There, it's all hands-on and you're talking about kits, so that the actual materials that the kids are using are much more experiential. They go aligned, as you said, with the common core. But as one of the focuses that this school committee has talked about is making presentations and whether or not we have a speech class at the high school, but the ability for students to be able to work together, you know, collaborate and work in conjunction with a goal in mind. I think that that is so much more developed in the science curriculum that we're using today. And just very exciting that things are happening, so thank you.
My question's related to the AP scores. And first, is it fair to assume that we'll see the benefits of what's been done in the middle school and the elementary schools years out with an increase to the AP scores years out based on those, based on those changes in the middle school and the elementary school?
I could only be the amazing Kreskin and say, yes.
Right, okay.
I suspect that we won't have to wait that long. That's, as I mentioned, you know, the, the students in the lower grades who come to us with a better background make it easier for them to be successful in the high school setting. But even those students who are at high school now are having reasonable success. And through the training that our, our teachers are getting to align the courses to the AP tests, I think you're going to find that those scores will improve almost immediately.
Which was my second question, which is, in the short term, can we hope and expect to see those scores increase on what basis? And I think you, I think you answered that.
I would be extremely surprised if we weren't back next year with better scores.
Okay, thank you.
So thanks for making it clear, I think, that we've, in short order, put some things in place that I think position us for success. And I, my question is just, and actually goes to that point, for the, at the elementary and middle school levels, and when do you think that we might expect to see some improvement in those areas in terms of MCAS and I guess subsequently PARC?
As was mentioned before, I think that the first year, next year will be the first year that the elementary teachers will be taking on, as Christie mentioned, new content and a new curriculum. So I'm lucky that Christie is going through this process the year, you know, in the year before me, and we work very closely together, and I've learned a lot from her and the experience that they've had. So just logically thinking through it, I think that it will take a year or so for the teachers to really acclimate to the new content and the new curriculum. And, you know, a few years to really see results from that, when the teachers have mastered this new curriculum and learned about the ways that the materials work. And I know that, you know, just thinking back to being a teacher myself, you kind of learn after one or two times of teaching something what worked well and what you want to change. That's the way that our elementary teachers work. They learn from, from doing. And I expect to see some improvement in the years to come.
Do you want to speak to the middle? Spent a lot of time talking about how this is a marathon, it's not a sprint, but I wouldn't be completely honest if I didn't say that I expect to see some results in the next year or so. I know that this year was a year of observation for me, and we did put some steps in place that I hope will show us some results next year. If nothing else, we've tried some things this year that will give us a little more data next year. But we already have a laundry list of things that we're hoping that we can do next year to support teachers and support our students to show some, some growth in particular areas that we know that we were able to start to tackle this year. The curriculum cycle will take us a few years. We're also not sure with the new standards exactly how the science MCAS is going to change. The, the standards are in draft form, and they haven't give us, they haven't given us the date in which the MCAS questions will align to the new standards. But at the same time, in purchasing materials, we were advised by the state to plan around the new standards. So we're sort of doing this dance right now where we're trying to teach all of the old standards, but also trying to incorporate the new standards with new curriculum. So we're trying to strike the right balance. But I-
So we're trying to strike the right balance but I'm I'm optimistic that we will see we will start to see some movement in the right direction hopefully within the next year or so.
If if I might follow up on that question uh Christie started her presentation by saying if you looked and with Dr. Spalding and John Phelan. At the English and math scores um what how they improved what their MCAS scores are I think it's important for. The public to know that we spent fifty six thousand dollars in science curriculum materials at the middle school. And so historically if we didn't have the advancement budget in the Milton public schools that would be a three year four year implementation plan. And so I always feel you only get to do sixth grade once you only get to do seventh grade once so that advancement budget. Enabling the system to purchase those materials at one time for to not have to say to the eighth grade teacher you have to wait two years to have the materials. Dr. Spalding eloquently um stated on behalf of the middle schools. School that if our teachers have the materials our students can learn but if you don't have the text materials and supplies. To teach the to teach the program then your students are not going to excel and be able to master the standards. So I think the advancement budget which we're going to do at the elementary school next year. Being able to purchase all of those materials and not have to have any student wait. A year or two years for the material so I I can't emphasize the importance enough of that purchase and that. Placing those materials in the hands of very qualified teachers and have Christie and Dr. Spalding at the middle school leading that initiative. And highlighting science um is going to reap unbelievable achievement benefits for our students.
One more question and it's probably a question for superintendent you mentioned common planning time as another important need. Do the recent agreements with United States address that? Yes, they do. Great, thanks. So so when I think about Ed and Bernadette and Christie and when we meet uh I say out loud um. Not in the short term but in the long term that our investment in first and second grade STEM which will. Move into this coming two years coding with a partnership with code.org and Bernadette and I are going to Harvard tomorrow to meet the leading. Uh researcher and practitioner in coding at the elementary level in the United States. To determine exactly how we roll out third and fourth grade coding. We have a team together for computer science that reaches kindergarten through twelfth. I believe that we are going to go from a district that has always been known for world language and music and performing arts. That science will be what the Milton public schools will be uh known for in the next five years. The work that's happening in elementary schools with robotics coding. Science from scientists moving up to ISTEM at the middle school materials being purchased to the superintendent's point in bulk to ensure that all students immediately have access and all teachers immediately have access materials and professional development. To then come up to the high school hungry for science and being scientists. To then take advantage of all the electives that have been present at the high school and now have been upgraded at the high school. That uh the the Milton public schools is right on that edge of being a science district and that's what sold our involvement with code.org we met with a gentleman and they were asking schools from all over the country to be involved and they scooped us up. That's why they're seeing us tomorrow at Harvard at three o'clock um in Cambridge they know that we're investing in science they know that our school committee is investing in science our community is investing in science. By what we could show them real dollars real positions real curriculum um so I I think and I am excited about. Uh not next year's scores or even two year's scores I'm excited in five years to turn around. And watch science fairs happening at a rapid pace robotics teams emerging from the Milton public schools and more students participating. Uh in science in a very uh excited manner where their learning uh in this area not only helps them as science learners and as scientists. But as I think Linda Lee said earlier that those types of skills transfer into all different other subjects design redesign that's the kind of language that's spoken in first grade now in robotics. Problem solving uh creating um teams of students that will collaborate and and try to solve problems those are all twenty first century skills so. I applaud uh Marilyn Decker for being with us for the few years that she was to push this forward. And um and Superintendent Gormley who two years ago uh said out loud that we will have a great STEM program in the Milton public schools at the elementary level. And we do and we will and it's it's great stuff in Milton schools so I think that they'll laugh but I did say that we're we're gonna be the science district and of course they thought it was great because they're the science guys. But we are gonna be a science district and I thank Ed Mulvey who was here for only one year with us while we reorganized to make sure that each level was represented with. Science administrative and supervisory supervisory support Ed came in from retirement and the high school did not skip a beat. They were uh involved and engaged under his leadership every every day this year and I I can't thank him enough for what. Excitement he's brought to the high school the teachers feel attended to they feel supported they feel engaged. He advocated for equipment and support for them in the classroom um and and they were in need of that I think every level was in need of. The TLC that each coordinator could provide at their level and they got it uh and I think we have some real excitement. And the PD that's being conducted and done by every grade level uh to Ed's point. Teachers will go to AP camp this summer on their own time middle school folks have PD all year. If you were a first or second grade teacher this year not only did you have Stephanie Holly and Amy uh in your classroom about early literacy. You had Bernadette in your classroom about doing uh Lego robotics and STEM uh that was a hard year for these teachers they worked really hard. Uh teachers worked really hard this year they did a great job they took every challenge that we asked them to take on. And I believe the benefits that our students will reap uh will be shown in the outcomes in the in the next few years and it's gonna be really exciting so uh thank you for all the work that you do.
And to John's point the reorganization the public and the school committee is looking at three people presenting.
Right.
But in fact um their positions are two point oh because Mr. Mulvy and Christie are point five point six in the district. But both of them give us as far as I'm concerned two point oh each and to John's point you have made a great team Mr. Mulvey. Who came out of retirement um identified himself as a physics person uh was a principal of a local high school and a science director. Uh you have brought experience to the team and on behalf of the system I want to thank you and wish you health and happiness in your second retirement. Disappointed you didn't take our offer to stay with us but I know you have grandchildren there.
Well, thank you very much I I I really do appreciate the opportunity that you and John gave me to be part of the Milton public schools. I've enjoyed myself immensely absolutely immensely and I've made a lot of new friends so thank you very much. I mentioned the the last time that I met everyone here I think I would only have been here for about a month. That uh I was very impressed with the uh the school the uh the calmness the. People the students um and you know that was our first impression and I've been here for a year now and it hasn't changed at all. I mean this is a wonderful place to work and if it weren't for the fact that I really like being retired. Uh I would also like to uh say that uh. The there are a number of people in this bill first of all let me say that the science department. Is a group of people there are some very uh young people in that department. Who are outstanding and are going to be here for years and years and years please keep them please continue to. Help them because they are so enthusiastic and they are very well trained so we need to keep those guys. Uh and um I I also wanna thank uh whoever put the science department on the bottom floor next to. Eileen Mullins' early childhood class. It's absolutely the best therapy for the entire department. Anytime we get any any kind of depression we just go into that room we avail ourselves what the thing is of the day whatever the plan is. Uh I've hunted for teddy bears. I've met Lucky the leprechaun I even got a popsicle once. What a wonderful program that is and the part of that program that I think is just outstanding is you go in there and you see how the high school students interact with the kids. And you see a whole other side of kids that you'd never see any other place so uh that's a great great thing down there and the other thing that's awesome is we talked about robotics. We actually do have a pretty good robotics team uh and we've done pretty well. Uh and the robotics team lives in the office outside my office little office and there's the science offices there and we have the. What they call the field that where the practice uh is set up in in my office there so I sit in my office and they're. Meeting out there after school and doing things so I've actually heard. Episodes of the uh Big Bang Theory that haven't even been written yet. Outstanding what a bright group of kids those are smart bright funny uh this is this is a really really nice place you're running here. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you very much.
A plus, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. That's the fingerprinting requirements.
Uh yes we're gonna turn that over to Mr. Phelan. Uh in Mr. Phelan's handing uh while he's handing out his um handout a school committee member had asked. For an update for the school committee and the public on a new Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requirement around fingerprinting. Of not just teachers staff volunteer bus drivers everyone who's involved with uh public school students I'll turn it over to you, John.
Thank you Superintendent Gormley um we uh I just handed out to you the memorandum from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education stating that. Uh the governor signed into law uh that um all all public school employees teachers and staff. Need to be entered into the National Criminal Record uh for a check which uh essentially is a fingerprint check. And this memo went out in uh November um letting everybody know in the Milton public schools and in schools across the Commonwealth that this would be an expectation for the school year. However, they did not uh uh put in place the infrastructure until just March or April of this year so um a subsequent uh communication from the from the Department of Ed. Uh in late March identified that um they had a two tiered approach to ensuring that. Uh every staff person in every public school was fingerprinted uh for the purpose of uh having their criminal criminal record run. Throughout every state in the in the United States. Up to this point the Milton public schools and all public schools in Massachusetts have quarried every employee which means that they have. Had their criminal history checked within the state of Massachusetts only this fingerprinting technology in process would have their. Uh criminal history checked in every state in the union so we are complying with this expectation from the state we think it's a good one we think it keeps our children safe and anything that keeps our children safe. We will absolutely uh take part in um with that said uh earlier this month I sent an email out and a letter out to all Milton public school employees that. We would be having this process take place that the state had finally put the infrastructure together for for our staff to be able to. Take part in the fingerprinting process and their way of staging this uh in incremental uh stages was to have all employees of every Milton public school. Employee and everyone across the state who are hired after July one of this year. So uh after we sent this memorandum out to our entire staff saying that they would need to take part in this process. We sent out an additional letter which is the last page of the packet I handed out letting the folks know who are new hires as of July one two thousand thirteen. What the expectations were and what the process was uh for them to register online pay online and then go to the most. The the closest location to have this fingerprinting done and their results would be sent back to the Milton public schools electronically. So we are in compliance with the expectation from the Department of Ed um our staff is taking part. Uh it does cost each professional member of our staff who teaches under a teaching license fifty five dollars to have this done. And it does cost every non-professional person in our district thirty five dollars to have this fingerprinting done. It is something that you only have to do once uh therefore it's not an annual expectation unlike the quarry program where we do all staff. Uh on a rotation of every two to three years so uh we bring this up because I think people see it in the news and we wanna let the community know that we have. Uh met the obligation and have taken part uh with our union and with our teachers and our faculty and staff and. Uh we are in line with meeting their timelines to have all uh new staff done uh by the end of this school year and then proceeding when they let us know. The next steps for doing all of our staff uh sometime in the summer in next school year.
I just have a question will this take the place of quarry or will they still have to do that in addition?
This will be in addition to.
Um this afternoon um Lori Dunn who's our human resources administrator and I went out to a conference on this in Needham. I also brought back which I'll distribute to because I just got it this afternoon and don't have it electronically yet the DESE sample. Uh school committee policies regarding um this because uh they've been in draft form for a while but they're now in um a final form. So uh as soon as I get electronic copy which I hope will be tomorrow I'll I'll pass them out and your policy subcommittee can take a look at them. It is a a different process um you do have to quarry they're suggesting you quarry first to see if you know someone would have a there would be a reason not to hire someone and absent a reason not to hire someone you send them off. To do this second check the quarry is just a a name based search. It it if so if something were to have happened to you in your past under a different name unless they knew that somehow you wouldn't be found out. This is a fingerprint based search it does they don't use any demographic information other than your fingerprints to trace it. Massachusetts was the last state to sign on to this they had issues with the um federal database and so um we are now the fiftieth state to be on so it is. Uh available throughout the country it it that has the advantage of having some of the kinks ironed out of the system prior to us getting there but um. As Mr. Phelan said they 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 have contracted out the fingerprinting services to a private company. Which has decided to set up thirty three centers unfortunately only seventeen of them are in operation as of yet. The closest one to Milton will be the Braintree one but that's not open yet so um our people will have to go um to one in Dorchester or if we have. Thirty or more people we can that we're gonna do all at once they will send out a mobile unit to us and they will do it here although. To my knowledge no mobile unit has been dispatched anywhere yet so we're we're waiting to see what the timeline is on that. It does affect all of our staff who have unfettered access to children it affects all of our bus drivers substitute bus drivers. And the bus companies can't do this we have to do this which is different from the quarry. In the past we would just make it a requirement for the the bus companies to quarry their people. Bus companies do not have access to this it has to be done through the school so it's gonna be a new layer of. Operation for us we're gonna have to know the names of all the bus drivers and substitute bus drivers for all the companies we work with for our special ed and regular ed transportation. And it's it's gonna be a a lot of logistical work on that end but um. It's a learning situation we had a lot of HR people there today asking a lot of questions. It is if as Mr. Phelan said if you stay in your position it's a once in a lifetime thing but if you move. It's it's a very interesting that this is an FBI document which they claim is obsolete thirty seconds after you read it so it can't be repurposed for anything else. So if we um um do a surface check on someone and next year they go to a different district. They can't we can't give them that information. They can say we can be contacted and said did you find this person um able to teach and we can only say. That on such and such a date we found this person qualified to teach or not we can't say why or anything. And so I I sort of questioned the use of that to another district it seems the other district would probably go out and do the check again anyway. But the the one difference is if that happens then the district has to pay for the the second check. So it it's an it's a they're all sorts of very interesting and strange logistics but. This is Massachusetts so we expect that so it'll be interesting to watch it play out we got into a lot of weeds today about how to roll this out but it. And as one of those people hired since July first two thousand thirteen. those people hired since July 1, 2013, I'll let you know because I'm going to go online and pay my fee and head up to Dorchester and see what happens.
Well, we'll look forward to more answers and fewer questions. Ms. Sheridan.
So you just touched on something I was going to ask Glenn, and that is how many people have we hired? You know, how many people does this, what is the actual number or approximate number of how many people we're looking at here? And is that June 6 really, is that a doable date, given that you just said that some of the sites aren't even set up yet? Could we really give that?
The answer, the second one is no, it's not a really doable date. In fact, although they haven't said it out loud or written it down anywhere today, they did say that as long as everyone was done by the beginning of next school year, that would be fine.
No, he hasn't told everybody? No, he hasn't. I asked the question. I'm sorry.
They haven't, they haven't written it down, but they said it out loud today to a couple hundred HR people. So it's out there. But the number of people?
Professional and non-professional, it's going to get into a very, a large number. So I would say that we probably sent letters out to close to 80 folks. If you think about after schools.
Right.
Before school.
Substitutes.
Substitutes, custodians, staff workers, temporary workers, teachers, teacher aides, et cetera. So it was a good number.
And do you know if the state is providing any kind of financial support for people?
No.
Wow. Do you know that answer before I finish the question? Yeah.
And I think to Dr. Pavlichak's point that this is another mandated activity service piece of business that, that districts are being asked to take on, like we do EPOMs, you know, two and three times a year. Now we do SIMs two or three times a year. It used to be once a year. The evaluation tool, recording that, sending it up to the state. All those are taking a strain on the Human Resources Department of each school district. So Lori Dunn has been working very hard and working with Glenn and myself to come up to speed with all these different new expectations. But the districts are really, across the state, I'm sure there was a lot of Human Resources folks crying foul in terms of, this is a, this is an ongoing piece of work that will be done in every district. That adds a lot of hours to someone's work day and work year. So when thinking about what Human Resources folks do now, you know, that there may be a time in the future where we reevaluate those types of positions in our district.
And just to throw one more in, if you have a program, as some schools do, that is accredited by Elementary and Early Childhood Education, Elementary and Secondary Education and Elementary and Early Childhood Education have different regulations regarding the SAFIS. Different timelines, different rollouts. EEC has to do it every five years where it's once and done at ESE. So there are different regulations rolled out in the early childhood world for pre-K and so forth. And coordinating that, I mean, some of the schools that have both programs in them, it is going to be even worse to try to coordinate this. And if someone is teaching in both of those programs, they have to be fingerprinted twice. It's, it is amazing.
I appreciate the time that John Phelan and Dr. Pavlichak are putting into making sure that we're current in meeting the obligation. Briefly, the school committee had asked the system to plan a STEM information night. We went back to the leadership team and what we're going to do is the elementary principals and the coordinators, you've seen, John Phelan and I, decided that the first week of June, June 9, on Monday, all the incoming, rising first grade parents will be notified that we're going to open up our English and French immersion first grade classrooms. There'll be scheduled times and the principals and coordinators will lead tours of the schools, the programs, and answer questions. So we're combining the best of all the worlds. We, that was part of our program years ago. We didn't do it this year. In response to the request for STEM, parents and guardians are actually going to be able to see the program taking place. So we think that that's an excellent compromise, bringing the best of both events together. So the parents and guardians of rising first graders will be, will communicate with them this week so they can do a save the date and sign up for a time. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Christine Winchester, who is a science teacher at the PS Middle School, and Susan Doyle, the Administrative Assistant at the Glover. The Norfolk County Teachers Association will be recognizing both of those individuals this year. Christine Winchester for the association's honor award and Susan Doyle for the Norfolk County Teachers Association Service Award. Those are two huge honors. Christine Winchester is retiring this year. You'll get an opportunity to see Christine after 26 years in the Milton Public Schools. She's taught everything from kindergarten to high schools, through middle school science. And Mrs. Doyle has been 14 years with the Milton Public Schools. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Madame Fassad, a French immersion teacher at the Tucker School, who went through the French immersion program in the Milton Public Schools. The Massachusetts Foreign Language Association in October will be recognizing Madame Fassad for outstanding teacher award. We'll bring more to you on that note. We talk about partnerships. Mr. Zulus and Mr. Phelan spoke about the Milton Public Library. Just a moment, a personal note, the Milton Food Bank wrote to us, I don't know if you saw the press that last Saturday, across the country, everyone was encouraged to leave their food donations at mailboxes for the National Postal, Postal Workers Food Collection. The Milton Food Bank rang and they just sent an email and they called me and they said on Saturday, if you had any students, we could really use the help. And so I think we don't talk enough about this community service ethic. There's a lot of debate over the years. I have no debate about it. I think that instills an understanding of what it feels like to do community service. It's a number of hours required for every Milton High School student. Very quickly, Brian McEnaw had the following Milton High School students, Jonathan Pierre, David Perkins, Elsa Crawford, Kryma Khan, Crystal Rodner, German Pateen, and Kalab Hurd gave up their Saturday. And the Milton Food Bank wrote to me that we could not have handled the donations and processed all of those donations without those Milton High School students. So again, I think the community service requirement at Milton High School, we can debate the hours, we can debate the issue. For me, there's no debate. To be at that young age and to have that experience and to know what it feels like to help your community and those who need you was evidenced to me by the reaction of those high school students, which I'm sure all of them had something else to do on Saturday. I don't know if we've been together since the MFE recognized their Teachers of the Year this year. So next to me, we have the Dr. Mary Grass O'Neill Leadership Award winner by the Milton Foundation for Education, John Phelan. Who evoked the name of Dr. Mary Grass O'Neill and her contribution to the system. And it's an honor that's given to one talented administrator each year at the high school. And these nominations come in from staff and teachers and parents. Scott Devlin, Mary Shapiro at the PS Middle School, Julie Ostrowski at the Colicott, Madame Brown at the Cunningham, Carol Kenny at the Glover, and Caitlin O'Brien at the Tucker School. We had school committee members join us for those surprise visits. When we go into classrooms, I think we surprised Mr. Phelan. We all walk in with the MFE. I love to ask the students, have you ever been in the room of somebody, a teacher who was recognized before? The teacher, we leave in shock. We leave a cake, great appropriate snacks at the elementary. The MFE leaves a poster on the wall. They take pictures. And then that evening was a night to remember when those individuals joined with their families and were recognized by their peers. So to the MFE, John has told me that other school districts are calling and really want to use the MFE model to implement a Teacher of the Year program. I think if Matt McCarthy was here, but I think we might have a school committee member that could do a job equal to mine, talking about the successful, what we have heard about building all year, the crescendo to the Milton High School Mini Relay for Life. Do I have a volunteer on the board to tell about the successful relay Saturday?
I can do part of it. And Ms. Bagley Jones was there as well. But it was fantastic. And, you know, to see students running an activity and being so organized and making it so much fun. And, you know, it was fantastic. I think they've raised over 20,000 now. But there's still time to give. I think their website's still up for another three or four days, I believe. It's a week after. So there's still time to give if you, if you didn't have a chance to give to one of the teams that we participated in. My team was cancer schmancer. But you can, you can continue to give. Matt McCarthy was very excited to be raising more money, a little bit more money than last year because I think he has a competitive spirit. And, you know, a lot of the rugby teams, players were there participating because I think Matt is also on the rugby team. There was a dodgeball game, which people participated in. And I, there was some zumba that some people were first timers at. There was some pie eating contest, which many of us were smart enough not to participate in.
I heard a rumor a selectman excelled at that.
There was a selectman? It was, when we all took a step back, he was still standing forward.
One of that was Caleb Hurd, who was one of your students who did community service.
It was a close call, too. It was a close, you know, race to the end. It was a really, really lovely event. And I think the, the custodians had donated their time.
Thank you for mentioning that.
And, and so they, they were all on hand to help out. And I, you know, there were many students involved in the planning, as well as I'm sure there were some faculty advisors as well. But it was a very nice event, run very, very well. And I know, like I said, I don't know, what else, what did I miss, Kristin?
What was the name of the girl who was the co-chair with Matt?
Yeah, it's.
Tanze Massey Green.
Tanze, yeah. Tanze was there.
So Matt McCarthy and Tanze, I don't mean to interrupt you. Do you want to keep going?
No, no, no. I was.
Tanze Massey Green. And as Mr. Phelan and I were just saying, this is part of a project for school. They have advisors. But it shows to Ms. Padere's email over the weekend, student leadership and being able to organize. And if we remember the cause for cancer, those kinds of funds. My, I have a niece who just graduated from Michigan State and she said, oh, Mary, we had one of those at Michigan State. And so we really learned, I didn't know about the relay, that it happens across the country in all different venues and on all different sizes. We have school committee next Wednesday night. So the rest of my report, I'll save until then as the night is getting late. But I'd like to take one moment. I wasn't at your reorg meeting. And for the viewing public, I don't think anyone realizes when you become the chair of the school committee, it's constant communication with the three of us. If there was another office, the person would have an office at Central. For the viewing public, we correspond with all the school committee members on almost a daily, let alone a weekly basis. Your commitment, all of you, to the Milton Public Schools makes us better. Every one of you brings your strength. But I want to recognize Lynda Lee Sheridan. She gave to us this year and we were better because of your leadership. And you really became a member of our team and right down to the elementary school, visiting the elementary schools. But you were a welcome entry into every level. So a small token, last year you also became the first person recognized in Milton. So that's just a token from Milton's children, in case you remember where your home is, Milton. A piece of jewelry you can wear that reminds you how to get home. And when we went to get that for the children, they told us that you already had several pieces of this Milton paraphernalia, but another piece.
Oh, thank you so much.
Because I want to thank you personally and professionally for your year as chair. You made us proud. And we welcome Mr. Walker to the position.
Absolutely. I would just like to say a few words, too, on that. It is truly a privilege to serve on the Milton School Committee. It is a ton of work. Yes, we all know that. But I was thinking tonight, as I was coming up here, it's my first meeting without being the chair, and I was thinking about how much I learn every year sitting on this committee and the people that I've met through my work on the school committee, you know, the parents and the kids and the teachers and the staff. And I truly feel like I get as much back as I, as I, as I give. So it's been a privilege and I'm happy to still be here.
And I said, at our reorg meeting, and I would say again, I, I think, I recognize full well, I have, I would say, two pair of big shoes to fill, Ms. Sheridan's and Mr. Pavlichak's. So I will do my best to, to uphold the standard that you've set.
Do just fine.
Thank you.
Now, our original plan was to move up Health and Wellness before the evening got too late. There's much to report, but it's a little late, but Health and Wellness Subcommittee.
I think it's a conspiracy. Becky and John and Mary add in if there's anything I forget. But this is sort of a mid-year report near the end of the year. And I just want to make sure, and Mara, I have these names for you, but I want to make sure to really acknowledge the folks that have been helping us out. Mary Gormly, John Phelan, James Jett, Dr. Karen Spalding, Brian McEnaw, they're the administrative team that come to our monthly meetings. Rich Garino, Adjustment Counselor, Scott Devlin Guidance, Jackie Morgan Food Services, Larry Rooney, Athletics and Health Education, Margaret Gibbon, the nurses, myself and Becky for the school committee, Edwin Rodriguez and Annie Schindler are Milton High School students who are on the team. And our community members include Vicky McCarthy, who is Youth Counselor, Emeritus.
Emeritus.
Thank you. Carolyn Consilla, who is our new health director. She was our town nurse. Jennifer Leggett, she's a parent and a community member. And Nitsa Otero, she's a self, she's from Safe Roots to School and she's also a parent. We also will be having, you can see, this is a very popular subcommittee. We're starting to charge money if you want to be on the committee. The person from the Milton Hospital is going to be joining us. What is the name?
I'm not sure who the.
Okay, there, but Milton Hospital has renewed their partnership with us on the Health and Wellness and they will be joining us. So Mara, I'll give you all those names. Okay. So the focus for the last few years of the Health and Wellness Subcommittee has been really to support any healthy initiatives that we could sort of get our hands on that are already happening in the Milton Public Schools. You know, we're a subcommittee of the school committee. We're not staff. We don't supplement staff. We don't do what staff are supposed to do. We just do what we can support the initiatives. And a lot of the staff are already doing great Health and Wellness issues. We all, I've talked, we've all talked about our health and, our health education has gone, has been cut over the years. It's come back, you know. But again, to just keep that in the forefront of how important that is in terms of skills that our students need as they go forward. So we don't try to take over any efforts that Milton staff do, does, but we try to find ways to support them. I think it's fair to say we're like a think tank or a brainstorming committee that tries to come up with ideas that don't cost any money and support what the staff are doing. Sometimes we've written grants, but this year we did not write any. It's really, it's a lot of work and it's hard when you have a committee of volunteers and already overextended staff to also write grants. But that is something we'd like to try to do again at some point. Substance abuse has really been at the forefront of many of our discussions more because that has been something that has impacted every community across America. Dr. Knight, Jonathan Knight, a Milton resident and a doctor at Children's Hospital, Ms. Gormly brought in to meet with us. He's added some lesson plans to our biology classes in grade nine that talks about and shows kids in slides how drugs and alcohol impact their brain and neurological functioning. And also he added, helped us add some things about prom night. And his goal, which I think we would echo, is to try to get all of our seniors and juniors through prom night and graduation exercises without anyone being hurt. And that's a really worthwhile goal. Mr. Jett has been very helpful. He brought back the car crashes, the simulated car crashes, where they show the wrecked car at the high school to try to get the point across. So that's an overview of the Health and Wellness Committee, I think. And some of the projects we're working on, and this is a co-project between the Health and Wellness Committee and the Guidance Department, we've compiled documents that are going into a web-based resource pages for parents and students to access. It'll be rolled out on the web by September. We're working out some of the kinks. We've developed a good amount of resources because we realize that a lot of times when there is an issue in your family, whether it's substance abuse, mental illness, divorce, unemployment, you don't want to come in and ask for help for that. But if you can go to an anonymous webpage on, you know, anonymous link on. you can go to an anonymous webpage, you know, anonymous link on our webpage, and gives you some helpful resources, and that's a really good thing. So that's our resources project. The social norms project, which I think is basically Brian McInah's baby, it's a survey to help students think about their own use around alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, and that's still in process, but that's been a very robust effort on his part. And also the Safe Roots to School person, Nitsa Otero, we had a Glover, no, Colicott winner and a Glover winner on the recent poster campaign, and I believe one is winning a bike and one is winning a bike helmet, which is pretty good, and they've done a lot of stuff around the Safe Roots to School. Vicky McCarthy, she's gone to some of the Healthy Milton Roundtable events to represent our committee. Larry Rooney, our athletic director, he either was or did apply for a grant from the MIAA for portable AEDs on the fields. Did he apply?
He did.
He did, did we get it?
We don't know yet.
Okay. And then another thing that has been a big issue for us is Chris Heron, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, the former Celtics basketball player who was addicted to heroin. He was, Mr. Phelan, I believe, played against him?
Coached against.
Coached against him when he came to, yes, so that was a very proud moment. But he comes and tells his story, and it's very powerful. It's for all ninth through 12th grade students, and then at night, and he's an incredibly powerful speaker. And even though the committee doesn't really like to just do these one-shot deals, bringing in someone like Chris Heron every two years is a really valuable, valuable thing to do. He costs a couple thousand dollars, and each year that we've done something like this, we've run around and begged and borrowed and stolen the money, not really stolen, but you know what I mean. Rich Garino has hit up tons of people, so just be prepared. We're having Chris Heron come next year, and we're going to come to the finance subcommittee your first September meeting and ask for you to consider allotting some money, some limited pool of money, but some money to help the health and wellness support some of these really important programs. Won't be a lot of money, but a little bit of money so that we're not out there on the streets begging for it. So I'm just giving you that heads up. Did I forget anything, Becky or Mary or John?
No, I just was thinking, in terms of what you're trying to say, I think it's more in terms of being able to plan what we do.
Yes, thank you.
That, you know, having maybe looking at some kind of budget, and, you know, obviously we've just passed our budget for next year, so we understand that this is, you know, a timeframe we're looking at in the future, but it might be nice if we can plan and then allows for a little bit more planning with the ideas we want to run through. And maybe, you know, it's in terms of, we have this much in a budget, and we have this much where we probably have to look for outside money, because we are able to do that, and I think even a lot of the members of the health and wellness committee go out and look for money for their projects, and that's great, and we want to encourage them to do that. But if we had planning for, for, you know, some of the other things we want to do, so we're not like, this would be a great idea, now let's go scatter and see if we can hit up the same people for money. And then just the additional thing is, we really are trying to get, right now, the middle school, not every child has health, because of, it's a scheduling conflict, it's not really a financial one. And so we really, we're trying to get that in, I think Dr. Spalding's doing a really great job of configuring it in different ways, so every child in the middle school should get help, in our opinion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that we're really working to push hard at for next year. And I think that's, that are the main things. I mean, just for example, like the internet speaker we had, and it was very valuable, and there was actually a whole article in the paper today, I think Mr. Jett was quoted, and that was a great presentation, but it took, you know, scattering, looking for, you know, PTO money, or this money, or that money, so if we had a little bit more planning what we need to do with, then we could supplement it in different ways, but, you know, just involving planning, so I think that kind of covers it.
Yep. Mary and John, did you want to add anything?
It's a great group.
I was going to say, it's another evidence that for originally and now Becky Padera, who have a passion, and to have all these people at the table from all these different grade levels and venues, to then make a difference, all of these programs and initiatives take life. So it's, I would compare it to the security that Leroy Walker chairs. Everyone comes together around a common theme, and then they go back to their schools and their disciplines, and it's really empowered them. So because of the two of you and your passion, these people leave and they come back and they report on the progress in their area, or they come to the table and say what the needs are at the different levels. And the community members have been really valuable.
Quite a great committee, but we don't have any more seats left in the room.
Oh, I was just going to mention, I'm not sure, I wanted to make sure her name got in there, because she serves a value very high in the committee, is Jackie Morgan. Did you mention her name?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
At least she's on my list.
Okay.
Did I say her name?
Okay. All right, because she brings the snacks as well, as offering a lot in the community.
Oh, and that reminds me, the health and wellness committee, one of the reasons they started was because of the building situations and the health issues, but also because the federal government has policies around food services that need to be approved by a health and wellness, and we're also obligated to have student representation on it, which we have been very lucky to have each year. So, yes.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one other thing. The, I know that Michelle Cruiser's doing a great amount of work with the peer educators and the peer leaders, and they are going down, I think.
Pierce, yeah.
To the Pierce in just a little bit of time.
The first week of June.
First week in June. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
You're welcome.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman's report, and we took the school choice vote. In your package that was sent out by Charlene, oh, sorry.
Could I just add one thing about the vote that we took?
Yep.
A few years back, I think it was last year, we had a wonderful presentation on the whole school choice question, the whole procedure that we go through, and I know it's on our website, but it might be helpful just to post it again next to this meeting, just so people get to see it, because over the years, we've asked for a lot of detailed information about it, and I think it's kind of vague the way it was presented tonight, because no one came to speak to it, so it might be helpful if people were interested, that they could read the research and read the presentation, and then see where we made our choice.
Great. In your packages, you received the current subcommittee assignments. We'll take this up at our meeting next Wednesday. If you're comfortable with your assignments, you don't need to say anything. If you'd like to do something different, or like to drop off of a subcommittee, then let me know. We'll vote this at our next meeting. Approval of vendor wa, oh, sorry?
Sorry. So I think last time we talked about subcommittees, we had talked about breaking them into sort of two or maybe even three subgroups. One being actual subcommittees of the school committee, required to keep minutes, et cetera. The other being representation on various committees of the school committee, but not being a school committee subcommittee. So, you know, something like payroll would be, I guess, one of the, that actually is in its own unique category.
I take no minutes.
But the town school consolidation committee is not the school committee's committee, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I think it might be useful to sort of create those categories so that there's a clear understanding of what are truly subcommittees of the school committee, and what are we participating in, you know, regardless of what the topic involved.
So I thought of those as standing committees and what I would call temporary assignments, but are you thinking about it differently?
Yes, because, I mean, that, I think that pertains to sort of how often, I guess, you're talking about it, but, but some of these are, would be considered subcommittees, and therefore, you know, require us to have minutes for, that anybody who would want to, you know, look and see what was discussed during those meetings would be able to avail themselves of. That, to me, is sort of the one major category, and then everything else, you can refer to it however we want to, you know, categorize it, but it's different than the others.
Okay, why don't we talk offline and see if we can organize this for next week's vote, so that that satisfies both of those requirements?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So the committees that are required to take minutes, those are?
Which ones are they? The finance subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, facility subcommittee, wellness subcommittee, yeah.
Because I know I used to do minutes and ring them, but then I just stopped, so.
And that's part of the reason that I think we need to sort of formalize it.
Yeah. So I would ask that we either all do them or we don't do them, because I don't want to do them anymore if nobody else.
And then just one other thing, Mr. Walker, there is no more school building subcommittee, so we can. And we do have a subcommittee that Mr. Pavlicek, or Dr. Pavlicek represents us on, which is, I don't even know what the name of it is, you know, the future finance of the school of the town committee.
Master plan?
No, not master planning, although that might be one that adds to the list.
Financial plan.
Financial planning, I don't know what the.
The five-year plan group, or whatever it is.
Exactly. I think that should be here as well.
It almost feels like there's subcommittees and then there's representatives.
Yeah, well, there are, and we need to be, we need to be clear on which is which.
Right.
So we'll try to do that.
Good point.
Approval of vendor warrants.
It's been a while since we last met. We've signed and submitted some vendors, some vendor warrants, and I have one here for signature tonight, but we formally haven't voted to approve the last couple, because we didn't meet, so I, we have three vendor warrants to formally approve tonight. Number forty-two, which was dated April seventeenth, in the amount of six hundred and one thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. The number forty-four, which was dated May first, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six dollars, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-four cents. And the one we have tonight, vendor warrant number forty-six, dated May fifteenth, in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents.
So I can take those as an omnibus motion and vote them all at once, or I could separate them? What's the pleasure of the committee?
I actually, I think I prefer to do them separately. If the last one, number forty-six, is one that we haven't signed yet, and perhaps we could do that at next week's meeting in terms of the school committee approving, because, because I don't know that we have reviewed that individually, so my suggestion would be to take up forty-two and forty-four and forty-six, I think I would abstain.
Is that a motion?
So, so I would, I would move to approve vendor warrants number forty-two and forty-four.
And, Mr. Pavlicek, can you give us the amounts again?
Number forty-two was six hundred and one thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, and number forty-four was four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move by Mr. Zulis, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Padera. On the motion, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Abstain. One abstention. Ms. Kelly abstains. And this is actually not a vote, but it's a report out. We did vote in executive session to approve the Unit B collective bargaining agreement or tentative agreement. That has subsequently been ratified by Unit B. And highlights of the agreement, the economic settlement was the same as with Unit A, so two, two, one, and one, and as part of that agreement, we removed the Director of People Personnel Services from the unit. Ms. Padera, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that, that pretty much wraps it up.
Great. Finance subcommittee?
Yes. Town meeting update, I think I, seeing that unfortunately I wasn't able to make it to the presentation, although I've heard rave reviews, I would defer to someone else who might want to give us a town meeting update, to the success story that it is, but I don't have the specifics.
The volunteers, several people, Mr. Zulis?
Perhaps as a result of an exhaustive, detailed, methodical, and at times sentimental presentation by the chair and superintendent and the two assistant superintendents, the town meeting voted unanimously to approve the school budget as recommended by the warrant committee. I think, in my view, that this represented a strong mandate for what the administration is doing, for what the school committee is trying to do, and I think it reflects that the, at least the representatives of the community en masse supports the efforts to continue to improve the schools, to continue to have the schools excel, and to continue to have these schools compete at the highest level. So I certainly viewed this unanimous vote as a strong mandate for what the administration is trying to do and what the school committee's trying to do, and as we try to continue these things into the future.
Oh, so, thank you, obviously, to the town meeting for that support. So the next item is the acceptance of the transportation bid, which I would refer to Dr. Pavlicek for an overview.
Coming around is a summary. The, our bus contract, had to go up for bid again this year, and I wanted to thank Brian LeBlanc of Murphy, Hesse, Tubby, and Lehane for helping produce a very fat invitation for bids that we had to put out, listing all sorts of criteria that were necessary for bidders for our school bus contract. Our school bus contract, this is for the regular education, large yellow buses. We had them bid on a package. It's been a while since a contract has been bid in Milton, it was five years, actually. It was a three-year contract with two one-year extensions, and so the rules had changed a bit, and so what we had to do was have them bid a package. We bid a number of two-trip buses. Two-trip buses are defined as a trip, a bus that does a route in the morning, which is a trip in the morning which can be up to three routes, as long as it's not more than two and a quarter hours. And we have them bid based on ten buses, although currently we only have nine, but we wanted to leave a little leeway in there based on the bid. And we also use these buses for special events, so we had them bid special events based on a guaranteed amount for a four-hour use of the bus, and then an hourly amount thereafter. And so that we advertised that we were going to base our recommendation, our computation of the lowest bid based on ten buses at a hundred and eighty days a year, and a hundred and fifty trips at the base rate, and an extra hundred hours of bus service at their hourly rate, and we asked for a quote based on that. And we asked for some other information as well, but that was not going to be used in judging who the lowest bidder was. And we prepared a long list of what the requirements were, such as, you know, the buses had to meet certain criteria, they had to be, the bus drivers had to meet certain criteria, and so forth. And we put it out to bid through the state's website, and we received seven requests for bid packages from different vendors. And so we sent it out to those people, and then several days before it was due, we sent them a reminder email that bids were due. And on the day that the bids were due, we received one bid from First Student, who is our current provider. The bid is proper, they submitted all the appropriate information, and it's, given that, it's not hard to determine who the lowest bidder was, being the only bidder. The amount is not terribly different from what we are spending now. If you do a little math on this, a single bus here, we pay based on a ten-month, ten-month year, we would be paying under this contract for our nine buses, roughly sixty thousand dollars a month for buses. We currently pay about fifty-six thousand dollars a month for buses. This is about, it's about a fifty thousand dollar increase in our bus budget over this year. I had left in our presentation some flexibility, I'd left about eighty thousand dollars in play for the bus bids. This does use a fair amount of it. Our, just as a sideline, we are negotiating with the special vendors currently. That is not subject to the Thirty B bid process. is not subject to the 30B bid process. Special ed bus companies with whom we contract, we contract with several of them to do all of our routes are just a best practice quote system. So I'm still hopeful we will be able to come in within our budget on the buses. But in any case, I would need authority of, a vote of the school committee to accept the bid from First Student Incorporated as the low bid for our bus contract. Their quote based on 10 buses at 180 days a year, 150 trips of their four-hour base rate and 100 hours of the 80-hour, their hourly rate, came in as a total of $715,700. And I would need a motion of the school committee to award this bid for our school buses for the next, this is a three-year quote, the only adjustment over time would be fuel adjustment charges, but this rate would hold for three years. So I would need a motion, a vote of the school committee to award the contract to First Student Incorporated.
Moved by Ms. Padera, do you have a second?
Second.
Second of mine, Ms. Kelly. On the motion, all in favor?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So Glenn, this reflects a 50K increase, was it, was it, in the final budget, was it 40K or 80K that you'd set aside for the, for the bus increase?
Eighty. It was originally 110 and in the, in our reductions, we dropped it back to 80.
And that includes both the big yellow buses and the special ed?
Yes.
And so, and so in terms of the special ed, do we think 30K is in the range of keeping us on budget?
I think we'll be close to that, yes. Having not concluded negotiations here. Yes.
Once again, on the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Citizen speak topic response, we have none. Any next meeting agenda items, any other left, Ms. Kelly?
So I would like to hear where the five-year committee is.
Master plan.
Well, it's not the master plan, it's the financial plan. It may be a master financial plan, but I'm not.
I said financial.
Oh, sorry.
You like master.
I did.
Anything else?
Go Bruins.
Do you have an update, Ms. Shear?
Two to one.
Three to one.
Two to one.
Four to one, Canada.
We'll get home in time to see overtime.
Citizen speak, we have none. Except a motion to adjourn, some move? Second.
Second.
Second of mine, Ms. Padera, we are adjourned.